...presentation from Reverend Lance Turner for United Methodist Church. Thank you.
May he be blessed. Praise is God, we give you thanks for the many blessings that you pour out on us. We give you thanks for the opportunity to live in this country, in this community, in this time. We ask that you give these leaders wisdom and courage to make this community a place of peace and goodwill for all. In Christ's name we pray.
(inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (inaudible) society, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one indivisible.
First item of this consent agenda. Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully ask that we move item number four on the consent agenda to consider the reappointments of the sitting members of Palopinno County Municipal Water District Board and Mino Wells Housing Authority Board onto the regular agenda so that we can discuss it. Can we do that?
(inaudible).
All right, we will do that. All in favor for all the consent agenda except item four? Or not all in favor, do I have a motion? I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item four.
(inaudible).
The move is stated to bring the consent agenda with the exception of item four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Six, two. So item number four, page fifty-one, consider reappointments of sitting members of the Palopinno County Municipal Water District, number one board director, and the Mino Wells Housing Authority Board. On the housing authority, and maybe Lance, you can answer. For those on the housing authority, you did appoint a committee that recommends their reappointment, if I understand correct.
John.
John, okay. So I don't have an issue with that. I would like to approve that. But Lance, can you know how many terms Mr. Ellis, Mr. Sturdivant, and Mr. Collins have each served?
I believe Dr. Collins has served one term. I want to hear something different. Mr. Ellis has served multiple terms. I think Mr. Sturdivant, yeah, why don't you just go and get that. Mr. Sturdivant has also served multiple times, but I believe Wes Ellis is the longest tenured of the three that are up for consideration tonight. So one of you is going to get you the information on when they were first appointed.
If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll explain. You know, back after the death of FDR, Congress decided in their wisdom that presidents should be limited to two terms. One of the aspects of government that most people don't think about is boards, and boards do wield considerable authority, time and time again, and frequently they get approved with little question or anything else. And if elected officials should be changed out every so often, so should board members. And while I don't have an issue with, say, Mr. Collins, because he's only done one term, you know, maybe it's time we look at changing some of these out. Yes, ma'am?
Dr. Collins was appointed in August of 2013. These are two-year terms. Mr. Sturdivant was appointed in 2002. Wesley Ellis was appointed in 2003. Dr. Turk was appointed in 2005, and Don Crawford in 2012.
Yes, ma'am. Any other members who want to see them? Any other discussion?
There's sort of five members on the board? Did I miscount that?
I believe that's right.
That's correct.
I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but that is not something that we have in place as far as our boards are considered. Sometimes we find it quite difficult to find folks who are willing to serve. These two gentlemen, Wes Ellis and Bob Sturdivant, have been very involved in the Turkey Creek Project, which I believe is probably part of your issue. I don't think it's fair to not allow them to continue to serve in that capacity. They've been very involved in that, and that rule is not in place at this time, that you can only serve two years. So I am against that suggestion.
And I know there's no rule on it, Madam Councilwoman. You know, it still, for me, comes down to nobody really pays attention to what goes on the boards a lot of the time. Had you and Mr. Uppen been the reviewers who made this recommendation, I probably wouldn't have any issue with it, because at least the council would have reviewed it.
We did review it. We did review it, and we do recommend that they be reappointed.
Okay. But that wasn't on.
Every single one that's brought upon front of council, we review that one. Most of the time, though, when we're asking about, you know, people trying to yawn, speaking to Tanny's point, there's no one signed up to be on any of these boards. A lot of times we have to pick and choose, let's move someone over here so we can fill this spot, and then here's someone over here to fill this spot.
Can I ask? I've done, I've been, I've served on four boards, I think, but I just need to ask one of you the question, because I've asked a couple of people to serve on boards. But if no one is resigning from a board, does it still get put in the paper that we, that a term is coming up that we need to, if anybody else would like to apply, addressing what Ms. Underwood said here? Because most of the time you don't get people, I know you put in the paper you've always wanted people, but people don't know when it expires or something like that.
I typically will put a little blurb in the newspaper if we have a vacancy on a board that we're looking to fill. I will, most of them expire at the end of March, as you know. And at the end of, in February, I'll send out letters to everyone asking if they would like to be reappointed. If a full complement want to be reappointed, then I just communicate that to the committee. And I may not solicit new applications if we have a full complement of board members that want to be reappointed.
I guess that's my question.
Yes.
We never solicit, let everybody know that it's getting ready to expire. Would you be interested to be considered? And, you know...
Well, actually, that invitation is always out there. I don't know if I, I do not make it a point to put it in the paper that the city uses advisory boards, and if you are interested in that, then come down and make an application.
Okay.
Maybe we should put it on the website.
Pardon?
Maybe we should put it on the website, just, and we can get, possibly get more people.
But I do accept applications all year long, people that are interested.
So if someone's interested in the water board, they can fill it out in any way. This current time it would be Tammy and John.
Do I advertise that a lot? No, sir, I don't. But I could.
I just...
If that's what you would like for me to do.
That was my consideration, you know. A lot of people, I know there's times that we don't have a lot of board members, because people don't, I don't know, people would like to serve on the water board, for example, and it comes up that I don't like how the board has been working on the water board. I would like to see if I could get on the board, sort of like in an election, I guess. Is that how it works? You know, I apply for the water board, and Mr. Ellis is on the water board, and I can give you my qualifications and the board. The committee would...
The flip side of that is the housing authority, because there's been a vacancy on that for quite a long time, and we have had it in the paper many, many, many days in a row, and don't get, and just don't get any interest in that. So, you know, let's see, double H, so...
What I would ask Mr. Mayor then is that we delay confirming the recommendations till the second meeting in January, so that it has time to be put on the website, so that people know that the board does have terms coming up for renewal, in case anybody does want to. Does that make sense? Make that a motion, yes, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye, nay, whatever.
What did you vote?
That's four.
Four. Four. It's three-three, motion fails. Do I have a motion for item four?
I mean, do we appoint the board members as a...
I'll second.
The move is stated to appoint the board members as opposed, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm saying.
Six, five, and one. Item number six, page sixty-four.
What?
One abstention.
I think you meant five and one.
Five, zero. I was looking at the...
Five, zero.
Five, zero, one.
Can we, actually, can we talk about that? No, I was gonna say, can we still go along with the, putting everything in the newspaper on...
Can we?
Yeah, it's quick enough.
Item number sixty-four, page six, your city's president facing concern in funding the Stan Stone Foothills Apartments that are located behind Brazos Mall. This is a forty-unit senior assisted housing facility, and we have with us tonight, and it's Tracy Fine, who is with National Church Residences. She is headquartered out of Austin, Texas, and they are looking to submit an application for housing tax credit assistance through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. This is a very similar program to what the council has previously been involved in with both the Royal Gardens Senior Project, which is being reconstructed as we speak, and the Pioneer Crossing Project, which is located behind Waterburg. Very similar, with the exception that those were new construction, and what is being sought at this time with this application is funding for a significant renovation of the property. The property is, I believe, what, twenty-five years old at this juncture, and is in need of renovation work. So what we are privileged to have tonight is Ms. Fine with us to make presentation as to what their project is. What they are requesting is that the city approve a resolution of support that would accompany the application that would go to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, I believe, sometime in February, I believe is the deadline. So let me present Ms. Fine to you.
Thank you.
I believe you have a copy in front of you of the PowerPoints she'll be presenting as well.
So I'm gonna stand here so I can, the remote control isn't working so well, and hopefully can tap through this. So thank you so much for having me here today, and Lance, for the introduction. As Lance mentioned, I'm Tracy Fine. I'm the project manager for Texas for National Church Residences, and we have owned and operated and built Sandstone Apartments since it was created about twenty-six years ago. So this picture is not Sandstone. This is a very similar property that we just finished construction in high school, and we hope that with your support and my funding, it will, in two years, look much similar to this one. National Church Residences is the largest nonprofit owner and developer and manager of senior housing in the entire country. We have over three hundred independent senior housing properties throughout the country in twenty-eight states. We also have about twenty-eight in Texas, including Sandstone. We have a huge concentration of Texas. There's only a five or six project leaders nationally. I'm one of them in Texas, and we also have our property management staff based in San One of the reasons that we are so in tune to senior housing is this impending crisis of the supply and demand. A huge demand of seniors are coming online, and the supply of housing available is very limited, and we're also very in tune as what is happening with healthcare costs as our population of seniors continues to increase and also continues to live longer. These are some pretty astonishing statistics that we talk about in National Church Residences, and that every single day for the next fifteen years, ten thousand people in the United States will turn sixty-five. And so the population of seniors in America right now is thirteen percent, and over the next fifteen years, the population, the rest of the age groups will go up to eighteen percent. And there are no new projects for very low-income seniors, and so they want to preserve existing affordable units. And I know you're saying, well, we're building the Royal Gardens, and that's a new senior project. Well, that is correct. That is true. But Sandstone Apartments has a rental subsidy attached to it, which allows for the very poorest seniors in your community to live there at Royal Gardens. That will not be the case. The tax credit program primarily builds units for low to moderate income households at fifty to sixty percent AMI. Occasionally we'll have a five percent of the units, maybe ten percent, at a very low income. Our residents pay thirty percent of their adjusted income towards rent, and Hyde pays the rest regardless of how much they make. So we really want to preserve Sandstone. It's very rare that a new project will come online that has this type of subsidy attached to it. What makes National Church Residences really different than other developers is we have an enormous concentration and involvement on how we work with our senior residents and how we manage our population to make them live healthier and happier, and longer and independent. We created a software tool called CareGuide, and I forgot to mention that in addition to having a rental subsidy at our property, Hyde also pays for us to have a service coordinator, which is a really important key in keeping our seniors living independently longer. But our service coordinators use a tool called CareGuide, which is developed by us, and it was a half a million dollar investment. And what it does is our service coordinator meets every single one of our residents, and since the first year this was in place, to find out what health conditions they have, screen them for health, health risks, depression, financial health, and they also are able to determine what services are currently at the property and what services should be at the property. So for example, the survey, we could determine that thirty-five percent of our residents have diabetes, and if there's not currently services for diabetes management and fitness and nutrition, then we would be reaching out to our community partners to be able to bring that onsite, or linking our residents to providers of those types of services if we can't bring them onsite. The four strategic outcomes of CareGuide, which we are measuring, and this is, again, is our base year, is to reduce rehospitalizations, reduce ER and avoidable admissions for chronic health conditions, reduce the need to move to higher care living facilities, and increase access to primary care. So the big key to this is increasing access to primary care, and so that these chronic conditions that can be managed, like high blood pressure or diabetes, doesn't turn into a catastrophe and end up in the emergency room for something that could have been avoided, or end up needing amputations for something that could have been pretreated. And we have a lot, our service coordinators are amazing at figuring out, how do we increase primary access to care? Are our residents not going because they don't have transportation? Do they not have insurance? Do they not know where to go? Are they embarrassed? And then they figure out why they're not going, fix that problem, and get our residents the care that they need. And actually, today I was at the property, and I met a woman there who had just moved in after living in a higher care living facility, which costs the state an enormous amount of money, about a hundred and twenty dollars more a day than independent living. And we were able to make a unit to accommodate her needs. And another thing that CareGuide does is that when we think about housing our seniors and keeping them living independently, it assesses needs of everyday, daily living. So for example, just because our senior can't cook a meal, or just because they can't make their day, because it's really hard to do when you're in a wheelchair or in a walker, doesn't mean that they need to live in a higher care facility. We figure out what we need to do to enable them to be what we call home for life or aging in place. And I mentioned this just recent, just before, but this is pretty astonishing, how expensive it is for our seniors to have to move to higher care living. It costs about a hundred to a hundred and twenty dollars more every single day that someone is in a higher care living. Not only, you know, is it really expensive, of course, no one wants to live there, we don't want to put our parents there, we don't have to. So to continue to provide independent living is not only affordable, it's, it not only makes our residents happy and healthy, it's also significantly more affordable. This page is just some details about what Sandstone Foothills is, forty units, originally built in nineteen ninety, as I mentioned, a 202 property. An average resident makes less than a thousand dollars a month, typically on a fixed SSI income payments. With the tax credit funding, we hope to do about two and a half million dollars in repairs. We first conquer the envelope of the building, do any kind of critical repairs, then we update any features to, again, help enable our residents to be home for life. And then last, but also very important, is what everyone wants to see, is the cosmetic maintenance. We enhance our community space, we use our community space religiously for a variety of social events, healthcare events, place to socialize. And what's also interesting about, in the event that we're able to secure financing for tax credits, it's currently as a 202, or a tax-exempt piece of real estate. If we are successful with the tax credits and we get an award then, when that transaction closes, it will close into a for-profit entity and will become taxable, and we'll pay real estate taxes. This is a very similar project I mentioned earlier called Parky Place. It's a 202, it's a three-story, about a forty-unit property, very similar. And this gives you an example of how incredible the transformation can be. Even with the detail on the ceilings, it's hard to see here, but we went from something similar to this to like an architecturally designed ceiling. And this is the community kitchen. And the hallway. And we were able to create a library out of one of the service, out of the old office So the tax credit program is extremely competitive, as Lance mentioned, administered by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. About one in four receive an award. And so it's funded with tax credits, will also take a conventional piece of debt, and we will keep a piece of our owner equity in the form of a deferred developer fee in the project as well. There are lots of ways to get points for your project, and every single point is so important, because there are four tiebreakers on the application. So every point, it really means a lot. And the things that we, that you as a city of Mino Wells can do to help support our application that we do get points for include passing a resolution of support, and also giving a de minimis amount of a financial contribution. In previous years, the financial contribution asked has been significant, maybe even a hundred thousand dollars. This year, they haven't named a dollar amount, and I haven't seen the resolution, using, I gave Lance an example of a resolution which might be in front of you. We're asking today that you would consider giving a minimum contribution of a hundred dollars, but in the end, we hope that the contribution might be in the form of something like a building fee waiver or something of that sort. So you're actually not physically paying us money, but you're showing a contribution to the project, and something in the form of a building waiver, which is probably about ten to fifteen thousand dollars, would make a significant impact in part of our silver worth. And the other things that we can get points for are evidence of investments within the community, and it's just so happened that we're hoping some of the roadwork that was dying near that Walmart intersection and the new urgent care center, we're hoping that's gonna give us some extra points, too, and I've worked with Lance on it already. I couldn't have a position together. Are there any, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
I have one question.
Sure.
I was talking to Lance about this project. Can I just ask, to become a member or join, if you're a resident, are there any, what qualifications are?
It's an income and age qualification.
At all?
Yes. So you have to be sixty-two years old or older. This project might have the ability, if you have a specific type of disability, to qualify as well, but typically it's primarily elderly residents, and then there's an income qualification that is dying to be able to get the subsidies for it.
You don't ask that lifestyle, ma'am? Any stuff like that?
How many residents are there now?
It's full.
Is it full now? Is it considered substandard living?
No, no, no.
Because of the renovations, or...
I mean, we do the best we can to kind of put bandies in place as they come up, but some of the things that we hope to be able to do with renovation is make it much more sustainable, new windows, new roof, be able to create more, more space in kitchens, more space in bathrooms, to kind of allow residents, so in the event that they in the future would need a wheelchair or a walker, it's just easier for them to move around. And as a twenty-six-year-old building, real estate is useful life, you know, it needs some love. We do everything we can to address needs as they come up. We are dedicated owner and manager, and we hope that, you've seen that for the twenty-six years that we've been here, but it needs more love than we can afford to give, and Hyde depends on the tax credit program to fund these giant capital contributions. We are on a national level trying to get Hyde to, again, fund these 202s as we previously did, but I'm not sure that's gonna happen.
It's been well-maintained, but it's getting old, it's very secure, and I live in that neighborhood, and it's an asset to the government. And the fact that you want to come in and improve it touches my heart, so hopefully we all agree.
Thank you. We're making our best effort and crossing our fingers that we'll get an award this year, but it might, you'll see, we need twelve months. We're crossing our fingers, we're gonna have to check out this year.
When I talk to the people who live there, I love it, it's much better for, I've got my father up to me. Any other comments or questions?
I was gonna ask, are you making more presentations, applications in Texas?
We are.
Are they all bungling together and then separate out, or is it just...
They're all separate, different applications. It's pretty typical that an owner will submit a handful of different ones and kind of see which ones win and which ones don't.
Do you have, yeah, yeah, on the applications you're submitting for Texas?
We are likely submitting three or four.
Three or four.
Are these facilities new to you, or has your ownership been with you all this time?
We built Sandstone.
Okay. The examples that you give here show some pretty substantial changes in those various locations. Two and a half million dollars doesn't sound like a major renovation. What do you have in mind that exactly for...
That's a good question, and I don't have my little scope or, we hope that we can do everything that you see in these pictures, and you would be surprised that these have actually been done with a similar amount of funding, and there are sometimes opportunities for some other sources, which I don't know if this project will be credited for. So we first tackle all critical repairs that have to be done for the envelope, roof, windows, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, everything to kind of preserve the actual envelope. Then the second thing that we would look at is updating our ADA standards to make the building just more accessible, and also focus on our community space, and hopefully at the label at the library, redo our community kitchen, and then the last would probably be getting into some of the units. But we are excellent at value engineering. But we are excellent at value engineering. We have done this four times already in Texas. On a national basis, we do about six to seven of these a year.
Do you use local sources for supplies and labor or do you have your own operation?
Sometimes we are able to work with our joint, we, we built, we bid out the joint contract to a few different joint contractors and they have to be experienced and working with high financing, working with renovations and tax credits. And then sometimes there are abilities to be able to use a portion of local workforce. And I also say that in that all the sources of money that come into a project have all sorts of strings attached to them, like you have to use this for minority owned or women owned or whatever it is. And so we do our, we have to accommodate all the different rules that are attached to the financing as well.
You know, Wayne, if you, if you put the math in perspective, that averages out to a little bit more than sixty thousand dollars per unit. And so when you look at it on a per-unit basis, sixty thousand dollars for renovations, that's, that's actually kind of substantial. ADA wasn't in place when you built these, correct?
I don't know, I don't know if it was yes or no, but ADA is like an evolving piece of code. It's always changing.
Was it Bush first, Bush, yeah, okay.
And, and like every year it sort of, sort of changes. And in some cases, we're going to be grandfathered into some things, but it's really our goal to create, like I said, a home for life environment for residents and make it easy place for anyone mobility impaired to be able to live there successfully.
I guess I look at, I look at some of your goals and I look at the general demands on an EMT system. You know, part of this in a way, you know, if you're able to do what, what your goals are, actually saves manpower and fuel and everything else, so. I mean, the city wins by this being brought up and, I mean, just your goals in general, the city wins, but if you're able to get the bid and do the repairs, we win on many fronts.
Yeah, the services piece is already implemented and being implemented. We just hope that we kind of slowly provide it.
Anybody else? What's the pleasure, counsel?
Oh, well, let me, pleasure, counsel, I want to ask this to Lance. And we talked about this and I don't know what we're getting ready to propose for credits, but we, when we talked, you were saying, one of the things that you mentioned, you're, for like building permits, if we, instead of cash or whatever, we could reduce the building permits cost, is that acceptable?
It is acceptable.
So if we, if we do like, it's not, it's not any cost to us, we just don't get as much revenue in, but if we do like a half, reduce the building permits by a half, that's something that's acceptable?
That would be acceptable and, you know, every fee that you, every dollar that you waive is a net gain to the project. It's not money, you're going to be directly surveying residents that live there now and in the future. So that would be an absolutely acceptable form of financial support for the application.
But we could also choose to just waive it in its entirety, right?
Well, the, well, that's a, that's a yes and no question. I think that probably the city attorney might want to weigh in on that. One of the things that we have tried to avoid is absolute waivers of fees because they are set by ordinance. Jump in there if I mistake this, George.
We can amend the ordinance or if we need to do that. But ordinance itself doesn't provide for waiver. We used to have, for certain types of organizations, churches and so forth, no fees. And, but I don't think they're setting, it qualifies under that, it might. But the council can always amend an ordinance if, if it needs to.
Now, the last time a permit waiver was requested was from the hospital, the Elton Clinic, couple eighth. If y'all remember those, either on the council at the time did request a permit fee waiver and that was granted.
A hundred percent?
A hundred percent, alright. And it's probably not a practice we want to engage in on a routine basis. Just on, on a very rough estimate, we would anticipate, based on our fee schedule, about an eight thousand dollar permit fee, includes building permit and the trades permits. Just somewhere in that vicinity, around eight thousand dollars is what we have estimated our, our fee structure to be for this project. Of course, it depends on how it's designed and what the elements of the construction are, the way our fee schedule is set, but somewhere eight to ten thousand dollars is likely the overall fee that we would be talking about.
You, if you come with more dollars, whether it fees waived or donations, that increases your points, no? It's just that category gets those points?
Correct, just showing a financial contribution. And we don't have to tonight identify the dollar amount. I think what you're looking at probably is a commitment of a minimum of a hundred dollars. And the timing for the way this works is we'll be submit the first part of the application in early January, and it's called the pre-application and then we see where it scores and everything else. I'm, I'm pretty confident we're going to do a full application, but that commitment from us as an owner is about a twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollar application to put together, which is why I can't say for sure that we'll go in. But we, at this point, I think we're pretty likely to go in, up to March first. And then we don't find out until July two thousand and sixteen whether or not we're going to get an award. And then from July two thousand and sixteen, it's going to take us nine-ish months to close on the transaction. And so it's pretty far out.
Which also gets us into one council making a commitment and then we could change and have new council members and we'd have to have holdout. So as long as we just do the residential force.
Sixty-five, so you have to be, yeah, sixty-five to sixty-six, Mayor.
So just, just say we commit and then a hundred dollars. So the idea was like to show the agency that you're committing a de minimis amount and might, and that we could come back to the table if we're successful with a ten thousand dollar amount.
We, we need to pass a decision, I could then live in, possibly a new council considering. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move that we approve a resolution of support for the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Tax Credit Act, a case for Sandstone Foothills.
Thank you.
I'll second.
To move to second, to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? I'll maybe get this one out of the past six. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Item number seven, page eighty-five, was considered a resolution authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Dr. Kent Glenn, DVM, for the purpose of establishing an intake vaccinations, microchipping, and spay neuter program for animal, such as Middletown Wells Animal Hospital.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Hopefully you had a chance to look at our November report, I gave it copy to you. Just a little historical perspective, so through November of this year, our euthanasia rate's holding just under thirty percent. Contrast that, that four years ago and we're above eighty percent. So we've made some real significant improvements and those improvements really speak to the essence of community policing, it's about problem solving, it's about partnering. So this item before you tonight is just an extension of that partnership, taking us to that next level to try to do all we can to service the animal needs and create responsible pet ownership here in the community. So it's been a struggle, there's been a lot of gnashing of teeth, a lot of opinions on the matter, but this item before you tonight is really a huge opportunity for us to make the quantum leap and hopefully, you know, you'll, you'll see that, that we can do this program and move ahead. I do have Dr. Glenn here tonight, he's, he's a very well-renowned veterinarian here in our state. Been on a lot of boards and commissions, he's currently assisting over in Weatherford. And we're just really blessed by his reaching out to us and wanting to partner with us in this regard. This is a pilot program, basically before you's a resolution to authorize a professional services agreement. And within that agreement, it'll outline some of the recommendations and protocols to initiate this intake vaccination program, the microchipping, as well as the spay and neuters that Dr. Glenn has so graciously offered, which wasn't anticipated. But there's a tiered system of vaccination and I gave you a copy, page ninety through ninety-two, and that just kind of explains how these intake animals, I guess that's a word, I don't know, we'll make it up today, it's the holiday. Will be, will be basically reviewed and decided, and has a decision tree there on page ninety-two. And then I gave you, within the agreement itself, on page eighty-eight, is this packet for both dogs and cats, that this vaccination, but we can only acquire these through the doctor's access. And so with your approval tonight, we'll begin setting up and you'll see some items in the upcoming over five hundred. If you have any questions, just call, but basically we'll set up the accounts and begin to try to get those in-house. Additionally, there's a training that our staff, although dwindled, we will build it back up, will need to obtain and so Dr. Glenn's going to work with us in that regard. And all of this was really to set up for the microchipping program because you're in a community and you had an animal issue that was significant. A lot of people have a lot of ideas, but the facts are you are surrounded by an unincorporated rule environment that is totally unregulated. So if we can evolve some means of regulation, licensing is not practical, number one, given our socio-economic conditions in our town, that's just not fair to our residents. But through this microchipping program, you know, with a one-time fee, we can reunite animals to our owners and perhaps entertain some dialogue with the council on some waiver of the pickup fees in the future going forward. Most importantly, every animal that leaves that shelter, whether it be rescued or fostered, looking for its forever home, will have one of these microchips and we'll be able to tangibly know where that animal went. And so that'll give us some accounting for how many animals truly we have that are here and belong here and the ones that a lot of people theorize dumping and, you know, various elements. Well, we'll, we'll have a better idea and measurement of that. And then, of course, like I said, Dr. Glenn has very graciously agreed to donate ten spay or neuters for those adoptable pets. We have a lot of families in town that maybe they shy away from adopting a pet, but everybody needs a pet, so if you don't have one, we got plenty. And some people, they may not be able to afford the burdensome cost of spay or neuter. So all that's outlined in the agreement. The funding for this, we, we talked about this back during your council budget briefs. So that seventeen thousand was not just some arbitrary number I pulled out. This was staged for the last three remaining quarters of this year, if we can get a partner vet on board. Got one of those, checked. Estimated about nine thousand will need for the vaccines. And Nancy Cameron and LeAnn Wells from the Palapena County Humane Society and one of our rescue partners for felines are here. And the Palapena County Humane Society has agreed to make a donation in support of this that kind of closes the whole package for the rabies vaccine. So about nine thousand for the vaccines, roughly eight thousand for the microchips, although I gave a little bit of buffer, that'll get us real close to the end of the year. Now, the one caveat and one caution to you, your constituents, once this funding runs out of this pilot program, we will suspend the program, absent some kind of private donations or some other subrogation of funding. We'll assess it, I'll report back to you as I do, and we'll evaluate the effectiveness of this program. So about three to four weeks, Dr. Glenn, to train the folks, give or take?
It'll be ongoing, but yes.
Ongoing, yeah, so.
Yeah, three weeks.
It started January one, three, four weeks, of course, we're in the process of hiring staff and that'll put us into February, it's perfect time for Valentine's Day gift. Everybody needs a cat on Valentine's Day and we'll go from there. And I'll keep you updated as, as the statistics are there. So on page eighty-six is just a resolution and that's followed by that professional services agreement. Our city attorney, Mr. Gault, was kind enough to look over this, even though he was swamped. And so it's just very basic agreement. Dr. Glenn's here to answer any questions and of course, Holly, always answer your questions.
I got a couple. First of all, I've written many times about the shelter and you have excellent employees out there. And I'm sorry, we lost one?
Two.
Two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know they do hard work and the shelter is something that I think is very important. I would find it very hard for me to pull the trigger and I think it's great. Now, my question is, the seventeen thousand, that's going to run out pretty quick?
It shouldn't, I mean, just, and again, numbers, guys, so I know, one of the numbers. You know, if you look at the numbers, and again, we had a break because the shelter was down because of the repair.
Is that all been done?
I'm sorry?
Oh, the repairs been?
Oh, been done, yeah. Been it back up for about a month, month and a half. So you, you lost about two and a half months, we'll just use that. So we're taking in an average of a hundred and ninety animals a month that's taken in. Considering our euthanasia rate of roughly fifty to sixty, we'll just call it, you know, that's about a hundred and thirty animals. It's going to run us eight dollars-ish per canine and roughly five to seven dollars per feline. With our partners on the rabies, which is huge, we're going to be able to get really close to be able to hit our averages. Now, springtime breeding, I don't know, the, the cost of the microchips, nine ninety-five to about eleven dollars, but we're looking at some vendors that actually we buy them. And this one particular vendor, if people, they'll be registered to the shelter when we purchase them. But if you take it home and you register it to Mrs. and Mrs. Wright and go online, you want it registered to you, there's a small fee, they send us another chip to replace that one. Don't have to, but if you do, that's a great program. So it might actually just sort of perpetuate, self-perpetuate.
My question on the chipping, I don't even know if this is, you can do this or not. Once we start doing this, this program out there, is it possible for people just to come on their own and say, I'd like to have my animal chipped?
Absolutely, that's why I'm trying to figure out a price point that is affordable to our community. Now, I'll throw out twenty dollars, whatever, but don't quote me on that because.
I would just think that the citizens could do, you know, I wanted to chip my animal, I could go down there and maybe get a good price and I could.
So one of the great community events where we have these immunizations and sometimes I think those, do those at CVS or somewhere?
Tractor.
Tractor Supply. So we, we bring some lovable pets and everybody in here needs one, but we can also do the chip-a-thon, same twenty-dollar fee. We want to get our baseline, we, we don't necessarily need to recoup all of our costs, we just kind of need to break even during this pilot and then get a good measurement on the interest, the support, you know, how, how good have we done? And, you know, how many of those chipped animals are leaving, how many are staying? And then chipping people here in town, and there's some other positives to the public where, you know, perhaps we, like I said, waive a couple of the pickup fees for local animals that are found. So reunite you with your pet and get a couple of free ones and then on the third one, they will ham you, I don't know. Sorry, we covered some of the costs.
So, maybe this is the doctor, do you see more and more people chipping their animals?
Yes, and I've had some experience with returning animals, like in the Katrina incident. You know, some, some of the animals weren't re-registered correctly, but when the, when they finally got their hard drives out of the mud down in New Orleans. But when the, when they finally got their hard drives out of the mud down in New Orleans, we were able to, able to reunite every one of those animals. So it is, it is a real valuable tool to do that.
I think everybody knows this is dear to my heart. And I've got to rescue more than a colleague that is a flight risk if he is chipped. Guaranteed. So he wants to roam the city. Have to watch him like a hawk. So any other comments?
He's also done it more than three times to get him.
I think the third time, I might actually do something.
Yeah, I won't, I won't be taking one because I already got a blue lacy that I got from the shelter. So, sweet, Ms. Cameron, are you a hundred percent on board with, with what the chief's trying to do with this?
Absolutely. I'm a hundred and fifty percent.
I think it's amazing, the project, that we're ahead of a lot of communities of this. Let's stay there. We, we've done tremendous with our shelter and we're just making it better.
Before we go into motion time, Dr. Glenn, I do want to say thank you for being willing to step up, for being willing to, because, because if I understand right, as you work with our, our people, it's on your license. They'll be, and so I.
But I'm going to train them with protocols.
And, and I know you will, but it, it doesn't change the fact that just like, you know, doctors with different categories of nurses or whatever, it's, it's still your license. It's still you. And, and I want to say thank you for stepping up and, and a special thank you to the chief because you've, one of the great problems you always have is if you can't quantify something, you can't fix it. And this puts us on the road to quantifying it and being able to actually make progress and bring some of these numbers into, into a realm where we can actually make true progress on all fronts. So chief and, and Dr. Glenn and everybody who's worked on this, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
You said the eight and nine dollars, is that for each round, like eight dollars for a round of your vaccines?
Yeah, so, you know, one of the protocols, and, and we've had a lot of issues coming before this council, parvo and just a host of different diseases, that one of the things we don't know is where these animals came from. So the vaccination is per animal, eight, you can just call it eight for both species. Every animal has to be vaccinated on intake unless they're going straight to euthanasia. And that would be an instance where they're, you know, injured beyond our abilities or something very serious. But you don't want to co-mingle a group that's staging in this area, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Glenn, with a group that has been immunized because, you know, it takes some time for all. So you want to do everyone. And then during that three days of holding, absent a owner reunification, knowing their animals there, then that way the medicine takes hold, and you have kind of a blanket. And then this is best practices, just as, as baseline for vaccination to kind of stop. And if you think about our ultimate goal as animal control in the city municipal government, disease control is one of those things. So this baseline to stop that, but it is eight dollars per animal.
And for this, the whole round of shots, not eight per shot?
Yeah, those ones I've listed, and again, we need the partnership from the Humane Society. But that list that is in there on the agreement are the protocol vaccinations that are recommended by the SPCA for these intakes. Now, there are all kinds of other things you can give them in oral and ears. But this is the ones that just kind of stop some of the kennel-related issues in these impounded environments.
I didn't see anything in the resolution, and I missed it. If, I'm just looking for use of the system. If I was a pet owner, I let my dog go, it gets picked up the pound.
Right.
Gets free shots.